Okay, we're called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 3rd, 2025. I ask that you all please rise for a beef invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets with the presence of our community, we're really appreciative and understanding as to all the citizens of Batavia and their various opinions. We want it understood that Batavia is here to service our community in every way possible that makes it a bigger and better and grander and friendlier city. And so tonight, we just ask for everyone's understanding as we go about the discussions that will be coming before the City Council, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of us, we are all here at the end of the day to be what we feel is in the best interest of Batavia. Tonight, as always, we wanted to ask a special mention for those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be shined on each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. And tonight, we also ask for understanding and vision and communication on the parts of the members of the City Council as they act on the items of business before us. And finally, we'll want to ask for a special prayer tonight for all those in our community who are sick or infirmed, and it just, we just ask that those folks all return to good health in the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Who would like to do the pledge? Alderman Malay?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Raza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Baron?
Here.
Got it, thank you. Lehman?
Here.
Lohman?
Here.
Peeper?
Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson? Vogelsinger?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. All right, moving then to item four, which is presentation approving a proclamation honoring Pride Month and authorizing display of the unity flag for the month of June. Alderman Beck, do you have this?
I do, Your Honor. A proclamation. Whereas the City of Batavia strives to celebrate diversity and inclusion with its residents and all who set foot in our community, and whereas the United States has been founded upon the Declaration that all people are created equal, and that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are among the inalienable rights of every individual with equal protection under the law, and whereas the month of June is designated as Pride Month across the nation to commemorate the Stonewall riots of June 1969, widely recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQIA+ rights movement, and whereas significant progress has been made, the ongoing struggle of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, and other sexual and gender minorities for basic civil rights continues to serve as a source of inspiration, and whereas LGBTQIA+ individuals still face threats to their lives and livelihoods simply for living as their authentic selves, and whereas all citizens, especially our youth, deserve to feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, community leaders, and the community at large regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and whereas the City of Batavia celebrates the history and diversity of our LGBTQIA+ community and is committed to fostering an inclusive atmosphere where all residents can live free from discrimination, and whereas the City of Batavia will fly the unity flag throughout the month of June as a visible symbol of support for the LGBTQIA+ community and a commitment to equality and inclusion for all, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to honor the strength, resilience, and contributions of the LGBTQIA+ individuals and to celebrate the harmony in which we all coexist. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Pride Month in the City of Batavia and encourage all citizens to celebrate the diversity that makes our community a proud and welcoming place to call home. Your Honor, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Beck, second Alderman Malay for the approval of the proclamation. I am told we have some folks that would like to address this prior to the vote. Is there somebody in the audience who wishes to address the City Council? Give us your name for the record, please.
Like a father who tells his small child not to run into the street, not to ruin his fun, but to keep him safe, God, our heavenly Father, gives us rules to keep us safe. We don't have to fully understand every rule, we just need to trust that a loving Father wants what's best for his children. Any sexual activity outside the bonds of marriage between one man and one woman is clearly condemned by God in the Bible. He made the sexual complement of men and women to create life from love. That cannot happen between two men or two women, and children do best growing up with a mom and dad in a loving lifelong marriage. When we make mistakes, God is merciful and forgiving, that is, when we repent and seek His forgiveness. God doesn't send souls to hell, people choose hell, rebelling against God and remaining unrepentant unto death. Proclaiming pride in the sins of the flesh, symbolized by the pride flag, is an act of defiance and rebellion against God and His design for sexuality. Have you seen something like this? It's no surprise there's a demon at the center of Pride Month. The devil was the first to rebel against God, and he continues to prowl about the world seeking the ruin of souls. He comes to us not with horns and pitchfork, but disguised as an angel of light, plying us with things that sound good but twist the truth. God is love, is twisted to love is love. The rainbow as a sign of God's promise is twisted to represent inclusion and acceptance of sinful behavior. God doesn't promise an easy life to those who follow Him. In fact, He offers a cross. But in bearing our crosses, stumbling, falling, and getting up again, uniting our sufferings to Jesus in His cross, there is to be found a peace that surpasses all understanding. Only then will we find the love our hearts desire. As St. Augustine, a great sinner turned great saint, had said, "Oh, Lord, Thou hast formed us for Thyself, and our hearts are restless till they find rest in Thee." Some of you may not believe in God or the Bible, but I assure you, God exists. Heaven and earth proclaim the glory of God. I see the beauty and intricacies of my children and of every other person, and I know they did not come into existence by chance. I know the God of the Bible is real because of the witness of so many martyrs who died proclaiming the simple truth that Jesus of Nazareth, whom they saw crucified to death and buried, had risen from the dead and appeared to them alive again. I see the glow of people in love with Jesus, their generosity and self-sacrifice. Atheists didn't pick up the poor and sick dying in filth in the streets of India, including those with AIDS. St. Mother Teresa and the missionaries of charity did. God's love inspires action. May He touch your hearts as well. May you come to know His love and remain in it. So I ask you, Aldermen, to see past the happy veneer that covers twisted truth and to do what is right. I ask you to reject the demon at the heart of Pride Month. Reject the pride flag that is a sign of rebellion against God, rebellion that leads to hell. Choose to follow God, not the devil, the blessing, not the curse. For those Aldermen who already are Christians, I pray for your courage. Think hard and pray before you vote. For Jesus Himself said, "Everyone who acknowledges Me before others, I will acknowledge before My heavenly Father; but whoever denies Me before others, I will deny before My heavenly Father." Thank you.
Anybody else? You have to come up and use the mic and tell us your name, please.
I hope you can hear me. If you can't, tell me to get closer to the mic because I couldn't hear too many people. My ears aren't good. I just heard about what's going on recently, and I mentioned to, I mentioned it to a lot of my friends. And I asked, I said, "Well, what's your opinion? What's the opinion? How does all this work?" I didn't know. And I thought, "Well, let me come here and just listen to what you say, whoever, whoever you are, whatever side you're on." First of all, if I'm against anything that you guys are for, it doesn't mean I don't love them. So I'll get that straight first. I decided, instead of pontificating on what I believe, since I didn't know how this worked, I thought, "No, just say a couple of things," and it isn't meant to insult any, anyone. But I thought to myself, this is thinking to myself, "This is crazy. This is wacky. This is, people have forgot about World War II, the Korean conflict, et cetera, et cetera." So I looked up some information about the American flag. I don't know if any of you have ever done that, but you should read it, and it stands for who we are as a country. And then when I hear people talk about, "We're inclusive for everyone," and then I hear people talk about scripture and what God says. Well, God says a lot. He says this, and He says, pardon? I'm sorry, I thought somebody told me to speak up. So anyway, all I want to say, I decided to just say that, yeah, this is, to me, is really silly. I think that, and it's not intended to hurt your feelings, but I've been around the planet long enough to talk to a lot of people, very smart people, much smarter than me, and some really crazy people, and they act stupid, and they act silly, and they want to be everything for everybody. You cannot be everything for everybody. There's a lot of things that I wanted to say, and I heard somebody say something about discipline. To have self-discipline, you have to have rules. Now, am I against what you're doing here? Yes, I am, because you're putting it right next to the American flag. That American flag should stand by itself, and you're not doing anybody any favor when they're coming to you and saying, "I feel left out in this community," because everyone is going to give everybody's opinion. I hope you can kind of read between the lines here, because I'm not saying it, obviously, the way I wish I could say it. And I don't think I've insulted anybody, but we got to be, there were so many people that didn't want to get involved with this, and they said, "No." You know, and I'm thinking, "Well, let me just look at these people," and hopefully I know some of them, and I do. And I'm really, really saddened, because that means you're, you're either really on the wrong side of things because you want to do the right thing, or your goal is to be kind to everybody. Well, you can't be kind to everybody. Pardon?
Why not? Yeah. You can.
Well, that was food for thought, okay? That's why I didn't want to talk too long. That was just for you to think about. Pardon? You can talk if you'd like, but just wait till I'm through. So anyway, I got one other thing, I hope I don't forget it. So anyway, my main focus is on the flag, and obviously, it's on people. I love everybody, but some people I dislike. And maybe you're wonderful to everybody, but I'm not, because I'm still learning. But I understand that the flag is real important, and I think what we do is we forget it. And when we talk about Memorial Day, we also forget about, it's not a barbecue day. It's to honor the dead. So anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you very much. I wish I could have said it better, and I hope I didn't hurt anybody's feelings.
Thank you. Next.
I could say more in a minute, but as a Christian, I would just like to claim out loud that not everybody holds those views about God or the way things work. My theology is that we are made in the divine image as we are, and that is very good. And being kind and inclusive is an American value, and raising this flag does not detract from our national flag, it only reminds us who we are and who we have pledged to be. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Barrett. I have to say my address, I can't remember. Okay. I did not come here with intent to address the City Council or the audience, but after the first two speakers stood, I felt compelled to do so. Standing in front of the students who are here to celebrate this evening and to hear such hateful rhetoric in a place of public conversation and in a moment of celebration, I applaud the City Council for recognizing Pride Month. I applaud the decision to raise the flag. And to the members of the LGBTQIA+ community, your allies are here with you regardless of what other people are saying.
My name is Howard Miller, and I also didn't intend to speak tonight, but as a former educator, teacher at Batavia High School, I believe strongly in the truth and facts. Just to make things clear, and I know I'm speaking to the choir here, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag was written by a man by the name of Frank Bellamy. He was a Baptist minister, and when he wrote the pledge, it was actually to support the National Education Association's putting flags in every classroom. But when he wrote the pledge, he didn't have "under God" in the pledge, because he believed in the separation of church and state. So I just want to let everybody know that when we say, "I pledge one nation under God," that was done in the '50s against the scourge of the communist Russians. So thank you for listening to me.
I'm from the same first Bible church as Sylvia and Fred here. That's the Holy Roman Catholic Church at the corner of Main and Randall up there, the Holy Cross Church. I have a big one typed thing, but I wanted to get down to the nitty-gritty, which is, I'm an educator, and primarily, I was trained as a behavioralist. Okay, if you know what that is. Monitors behavior, sets up behavior plans, et cetera. And I've used that over my career in many places. I've worked for the Chicago Public Schools. Then I moved out here, I worked for the Elgin Public Schools, I worked for the St. Charles Public Schools, and I even did a couple of days in and out of the Batavia High School over here. And I worked for the Saudi Arabian schools. And it was based on behavior, and what I'm going to say to you, as many of you people here, looking at the City Council, I would imagine many of you are golfers, or some of you are golfers, at least one of you is a golfer. And you know that when you pick those clubs up, and you do it over and over and over, you get better, okay? That's what we call a behavioral thing. In behaviorism, it's a theory of psychology that focuses on observable behaviors. In other words, just to make it simple without getting into the weeds with it, it's what you do is what you get, okay? And we call it in the, in the study of worker characteristics, we call it knowledge, attitudes, and skills, and habits. And what we're doing is when we put up this flag that indicates approval of alternative lifestyles, which are choices for individuals, and I bear no ill will towards anyone of this group, but when we put this up in front of children, they see it, and we're filling their day with it. It's what you call in business, an opportunity cost. Okay, the kids aren't out golfing all day, getting better at golfing. They're in school, and they're supposed to be learning reading and math. Unfortunately, the achievement rates in the American schools are at the bottom of the developed, the developed countries in the world, okay? I mean, I've had students from Africa that would come into public school systems over here and be ace students, and they couldn't believe what they were dealing with. They said, "Mr. Mooney, what's the matter with these children?" I said, "Well, they don't study five hours a day like you do. Opportunity cost. What you do is what you get." Now, I'm going to give you a few facts. The average child today, sitting in front of a screen or in front of their little cellphone, sees 16,000 simulated murders, 200,000 acts of violence on the screen by the age of 18. Mass shootings have tripled since 2011. For people aged 10 to 14, the suicide rate tripled from 2007 through 2018, then did not significantly change, while the homicide rate doubled from 2016 through 2021. I'm going to, the next one, I'm going to simplify. This is all from studies from CDC, et cetera. You can easily find this stuff. For fully adjusted gender combined models, the rate of suicide-related behavior for bisexual individuals was 2.98 times more likely to have an event. That's almost three times greater. And gay men and lesbians, 2.1 times more likely compared to heterosexual individuals. There was a, these are statistics. I'm not making these up. I'm not hoping that that's the case. I do not want people to commit suicide or feel like they should have to, okay? So please, the grumbling in the background, these are just facts.
I'm trying to keep everybody here to about three minutes, so I'd ask you to wrap it up, please.
We'll be through in one minute. There was a 400 increase in antirac press and use over the same time. Does this public airing of private family matters? And sexuality is primarily done through the education of the family, not through public schools and not through this, this entity teaching morality, because that's what we're doing here. Is this more equitable? Is it more rational? Is it safer? The evidence above shows the rapid disintegration of the social fabric of our society, the family, that once bound us all together as common humanity. And that's all I have to say about it. When you put things in front of kids, they pick up on it, they're going to model it, chain it, shape it, emulate it, and do it. And this is not where they should be learning it. They should be learning it at home with mom and dad when these questions come up, in my humblest esteem. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ryan O'Connell. Some people don't like me, but I'll tell you, I love the United States of America. I love the Pledge of Allegiance. When I was in elementary school, we would say the pledge, put my hand on my heart, and it really meant something. We were promised something. All men created equal. And we know that's not actually true. We can look at our own history, we can look in the mirror of our history books, but we can also see that we've made adjustments to that. We've tried. Slavery was ended. Women got the right to vote. Steps, steps taken by individuals, groups of people, larger groups of people. Little steps to something much greater. This country, the United States of America. Thank you for putting that flag up for this month.
Hi, my name's Bree Hayes. I just want to echo, thank you for doing this, and know that flying this flag saves lives. It really, really does. Seeing representation of who you are out in the community, it really saves lives. I wish I could give you some statistics. Someone already has given some that, that are true, that our LGBTQ family is more, more likely to harm themselves. And again, thank you for taking the steps to make our city a safe place for queer folks. Thank you.
Bob McQuillan from Batavia. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I was planning to talk, but I was actually going to probably talk later in the meeting because my comments really aren't on this item, but my feeling is, most of the crowd is going to leave after the flag is risen, so I think it's probably best for me to speak right now. I want to process my remarks by saying, I'm only going to mention the pride flag as it pertains to the official city of Batavia flag policy. It's, it's very clear that the decision has been made that the pride flag will fly every Whether I like it or not, it's going to fly. So sometimes you have to accept things that you don't like. So I accept it. I accept it. But the amount, the announcement of the pride proclamation on the city's website resulted in at least 126 comments, and that was as of yesterday. I didn't check today. I would guess one of the top responses from a city Facebook posting over the last year. Clearly, this is still a hot topic with residents. What does the pride flag represent? You hear phrases like inclusion or a lifestyle choice? Okay, I can buy that. The flag policy in part reads, pursuant to proclamation of the mayor or resolution of the City Council, other flags may be flown by the City of Batavia. And you guys all voted on that June 17th of last year, when a particular person asked for a different kind of flag to be flown, and there was no flag policy. So the city created a flag policy. Okay? If what I said was just true, why over the last year hasn't the mayor or any other council person requested a flag other than the pride flag be flown? Listening to the council meeting from June 17th of last year, it is clear the policy was written to exclude public input. I suggest everybody go back and listen to that meeting. It's very telling. The discussion was clear in saying that the flagpole represented government speak, not public speak. So in reality, the City Council isn't interested in what the public requests. That brings me to the question. Was the flag policy written to exclude all flags except the pride flag? The actions of the city staff, the mayor, and City Council lead me to say yes. And I try to prove my point. Throughout the year, there are dozens of things that are recognized with their own awareness month. Just from May through December, these include, but are not limited to, in May, National Cancer Research Month, Mental Health Month, Lou Gehrig's Disease Awareness Month, Older Americans Month. I kind of enjoy that one. I don't think there's a flag for that one, though. Oncology Nursing Month, and in July, National Recreation and Parks Month. Boy, that'd be great for our Park District, right? August, National Goth Month. September, Library Card Sign-Up Month. Great for our library to fly a flag. This also includes Suicide Prevention Month, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and in October, of course, we have Breast Cancer Awareness Month. November, you have Native American Heritage Month, American Diabetes November, you have Native American Heritage Month, American Diabetes Month, Lung Cancer Awareness Month, Epilepsy Awareness Month, National Adoption Month, National Alzheimer's Disease Month, Military Family Month. And in December, you have Seasonal Depression Awareness Month. Again, I ask you, the mayor nor any of the alderpersons never thought to ask the council to recognize any of these things by requesting a flag be flown in their honor? Remember, you're the only people that can request. That doesn't sound very inclusive to me. I'll leave you with two quotes I read online about this topic. "I will not poison my well to preserve yours." "We can disagree and still be friends" does not apply to racism, sexism, homophobia, or transphobia. Those are two very strong statements, and might be shocking to some people. They don't seem inclusive at all to me. Both of those statements were made by an openly gay person. Thank you.
I'll respond to you, Bob. I'll respond to you on the policy that we created. We created a policy, and the one and only thing and the one and only flag that we've been able to agree on enough of us to pass it has been the unity flag. That's the only one that we've had. We've had other requests, and at this point, I don't think anybody has, you know, tried to bring that to a council-level discussion, because what we all think of each other and what we know of each other, we wouldn't want to go down that road.
Well, that's odd to me, because I don't know how you guys could pick the minds and know what everybody else is thinking. Okay? If you really want to show that you're inclusive to the community, someone should have brought a request up and vote no. That's fine, vote no. But don't assume you're going to vote no. That's more offensive to me than writing the flag policy that looks like you exclude every flag than the Pride flag. And for those who don't know, in the audience, I was the one that kind of generated the flag policy, because I asked for another flag to be flown, and was shot down pretty quickly, and the city staff scrambled, and within two days, there was a new flag policy proposed. Let's be honest with everybody here. Okay? I challenge someone to bring up one of those many organizations I mentioned and ask that they be honored by their flag being flown through their month of awareness. I'm not asking for a particular one. You've already decided on the Pride flag. That's okay. I'm fine with that. I don't agree, it's not my lifestyle, but I'm fine that it flies, because it's flying everywhere now. But don't forget the other organizations that are just as important as that community. I'm sure someone with ovarian cancer would be thrilled that they're recognized on a flag in the city. That's what I would call inclusivity. Thanks for your comment, though.
I'm Martin Byrne, and I won't take up as much time as the last speaker, but I will say that he clearly doesn't understand the flag policy, because I was also following what was happening with it last year, and it was, if I recall correctly, designed to be in line with a ruling by the U.S. Supreme Court on city flag polls and what can be flown, and that it's, it is government speech and not public speech in the sense that this body has to approve what flags are flown on that flag pole. And if someone would like to bring up another flag to fly for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, then that's certainly a right that they have. I'm not sure how flying this flag takes away from any of those other months and flags that we want to recognize. A lot's been said. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm not going to be able to respond to it all. I will say that as someone, as someone who grew up in this town as a queer kid, seeing that flag is important. Seeing that flag is suicide prevention. And I hope that the individuals who have, some of the individuals who've preceded me up here tonight, never know the pain of that, the pain that I've experienced as a queer person. Hopefully, they never know the pain and just the exhaustion of having to come up here every single year and prove that we exist as people, and that we are valid in our identities, and that we are loved. It's really, it's really a very difficult thing to do. I thank the council for their support. I look forward to seeing that flag up once again this year, and I thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lexi Wilson, and I was not planning to speak tonight, but now I find it necessary. Pride does not mean demonist. Pride does not mean, pride does not mean anger. Pride should not mean suicide. Pride should mean love, you guys. Pride should mean love.
I'll just take 30 seconds. The previous speaker.
Point of order. No.
Point of order. We have three minutes. I do understand the flag policy.
Point of order. No. You had your time.
Watch the June 17th meeting to find out who has control.
All right. We had had some discussions before the meeting with several of the aldermen, and everybody said we should try to keep the speeches to a half hour. So we have now extended that, so.
One more.
All right, one more. You're it.
Thank you, young lady, for speaking. She has more courage than I do. My name is Kristin Grease. I was not here to talk either. I cannot stand, I cannot sit there and say that diversity doesn't make us more beautiful. It doesn't make our community better. It makes everybody, everybody's life is more full. I appreciate the diversity. I'm thankful I live in a city that has the diversity and the approving of the diversity. As a Christian, I'm only called to love one another.
We had made a commitment among ourselves that we try to keep this a half hour, and we've extended that, so I'm going to terminate it now. We got to take a vote. We have a motion and second on the floor. So I'd ask the clerk to call the roll for the approval on the ordinance.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper absent. Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
No.
Two noes, 11 yes, one absent.
Motion's approved.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to you.
At this time, we hope you'll all join us at the flag for the raising of our unity flag and to hear some words spoken by Pastor Page.
So we're going to take a brief recess. We'll be back hopefully in about 10 minutes. items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything from the council tonight? Okay, moving to seven, the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alden Beck?
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file the April 2025 building reports, and for approval, the May 23rd, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,110,728.69. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $2,728,032.15. The city council minutes for May 19th, 2025. Resolution 2025-81-R authorizing the execution of a contract in an amount not to exceed $833,696 for the Batavia Food Pantry, Interfaith Food Pantry and Closed Closet Remodeling Project at 916 First Street with KWCC Construction, Inc. of Montgomery, Illinois. Resolution 2025-79-R and 2025-80-R approving a contract with Builders Paving LLC for the 2025 street and sidewalk program and authorizing MFT with iDOT. Ordinance 2025-33 annexing properties of South Redant Road and Wagner Road. Resolution 2025-76-R approving a plot of dedication for a portion of Center Avenue. Ordinance 2025-31 amendment to the text of the zoning code, Chapter 4.1, Site Regulations, City of Batavia, applicant. Your honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion and second for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify in the staff report under the annexation one under item G, that there was a property that was noted in there that is 2 South 815 Redant. That was indicating that it's on water. That is not part of the annexation. Everything else is correct in the documents, but just to clarify that that was not included.
And if I just may, thank you, Mr. Pointing. It's 2S915 Wagner Road is our property. It was mistakenly contained in the, in the residence.
All right, thank you. So noted. Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item eight, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address us tonight? Could you give us your name, please?
Hi, my name is Carrie Ziebold. I came here tonight to share with you my experience of trying to open a board game restaurant in the downtown Batavia area. First, I want to share a little bit about my background. My husband Sean and I moved to Batavia in 2007. We chose Batavia specifically for all the reasons that everybody in here chose to live in Batavia. It's a larger town with a small community vibe. We enjoy the outdoor lifestyle and have loved raising our four children here. As a member of the community, I was part of the Streetscape Committee in 2010. I volunteered for numerous organizations such as Batavia Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as many more. I'm a former board member of BFII, as well as have had a very successful real estate career over the last 16 years, helping over 100 families locate to Batavia. I even got to enjoy working with Mayor Schelke on one of the transactions. My husband is also a former board member of the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary Clubs. To say we love this city is a huge understatement. About 18 months ago, we had an idea that developed for my son of starting a board game restaurant in the downtown Batavia area. We started to ask around, and the enthusiasm for the venue was overwhelming. After researching the idea and determining it would be a value add to the city of Batavia, we set out to find our home for the restaurant. In the past 12 months, we have spent over $100,000 of our own money and have been under contract with three different locations, trying to make our dream a reality. As a quick refresher to some of those, and maybe a first-time introduction to many others, the board game restaurant was planned to accommodate approximately 100 guests, indoor and then another 40 outdoor. We offer 800 board games, as well as serve food and beverages, both alcoholic and non-alcoholic. We plan to have a meeting room where community members could use it for their gatherings as well. Our pro forma indicates conservatively that we will bring in over $1.6 million annually, and we will hire approximately 35 to 50 people. It is a place for friends and family to gather, eat, and play. I come here tonight to share two major problems we've had with this project, and why it is very unlikely that we would be able to move forward with our plans of opening the restaurant in the city of Batavia. The first one is infrastructure issues with regards to location, and the second is the communication issues with city administration. First of all, the infrastructure issues. Location one is 131 North Batavia Avenue. There are gas tanks in the ground, and the surrounding soil is contaminated with harmful chemicals. To erect a building on the location, the deteriorating gas tanks and contaminated soil must be removed, and the ground must be filled in. The EPA must get involved, and the total cost is approximately $250,000, and will take no less than 18 months. The time and cost constraints forced us to move on to a different location. Location number two, 21 North River Street. That is also, it butts next to the Pal Joey's buildings and the Bar Evolution. There's a lot of issues with this property, and I'll break them down into three sections. One, there are various code violations that have not been addressed by the owner and/or the city. These violations add major expenses to renovating the property. Some of the violations include broken and rotten windows, a deck that is completely detached from the building and is deteriorating, the roofline abutting against the adjacent building is not secure and allows rain penetration between the two buildings, and the railing on the riverside is deteriorating. All of these improvements will cost approximately $150,000. When the building was built in 1952, the water, gas, and sewage lines were all borrowed from the neighboring adjoining buildings 27 to 31 North River Avenue. The electric box for all the addresses is also at the south end of 21 North River. To make the building function as a standalone building and meet the current code standards, the water, sewer, and gas will all need to have a sole line run to them, and the electric will have to be rerouted to the neighboring structure to have its own box. The cost of doing this will be approximately $420,000. The smokestack at the northern end of the building has been cited two times as having code violations, both in 2015 and 2023. However, they have gone unaddressed. In our research, we have had a mason contractor, as well as an engineer, both say that the structure looked as if the structural integrity is in question. If this is in fact true, there is a large possibility the structure would collapse on 21 North River Street. Considering the infrastructure improvements would exceed over $550,000, we were forced to move on to a third location. Location number three, 35 North Water Street. We received confirmation today, this afternoon actually, that the site was previously used as a petroleum distribution facility, which included up to six large bulk storage tanks. This information was uncovered through an external contractor we engaged specifically to investigate the site's history. And while it's obvious to the naked eye, there is also unaddressed code violations on that property as well. With the new knowledge of the tanks and the known soil contamination, that contract has also been canceled as of this evening. We have exhausted all of our options. Upon closely reviewing the strategic plan adopted by city council in June of 2024, we found that our concept aligns very well with the outlined business growth objectives and the targeted locations. However, the costs required to make any of these sites developable are prohibitively high. For a small business absorbing these expenses on top of standard development fees, it makes financial viability virtually impossible. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have encountered two major problems with trying to build a new business in the city of Batavia. Whether it is a lack of transparency or outright truth, my team and I have been baffled at, by our experience. I would like to share with you some of the highlights. I'm going to work backwards and start with 35 North Water Street because it's the most current one. On April 2nd, Jeff Leets, my lead architect, had a phone conversation with Jeff Albertson about the concern of the environmental issues with 35 North River Street and the surrounding, I'm sorry, 35 North Water Street and the surrounding properties, specifically 24 North Batavia Avenue. It took a full week before Jeff Albertson responded to my architect, to which Albertson responded that there were some documents surrounding 24 North Batavia, but there was no information about 35 North Water Street. On April 16th, Jeff Leets, my contractor from Sequoia, my real estate broker, and I all visited the site. We were trying to determine whether or not we found information that showed if there were environmental issues there. This vis, this visit did, by the way, cost me fees and from the contractor and the architect. When we were at the site, Jeff, my, the contractor, I'm sorry, Jeff and my contractor saw and photographed two well monitors. For those of you who don't know, well monitors test soil for contamination. These well monitors abut up to the property lines of 35 North Water Street. I visited city hall immediately after that with my broker to present the photographs and requested a meeting with an appropriate representative. Jeff Albertson, Drew Rackhall, and Anthony Esam met with myself and my broker. When I asked Jeff and Drew about the potential of any environmental concerns regarding the property, Jeff again said that he had absolutely no knowledge of any contamination at or around that area. I then showed Jeff the photos of the well monitors. Jeff then said there was a lawsuit regarding the property at 24 North Water, and he was told by his boss that he's not allowed to discuss the property. He advised me to submit a FOIA request. Then there was discussion about 21 North River and how the city's lack of holding the builder owner responsible for code violations has made it difficult for a developer to build business in the downtown area. Jeff admitted that those, that they have been lazy, which was his word, with enforcing on the building owners there, and generally they want to be friendly to business owners. On April 17th, James Nalepa, who is also with CVG Architecture Firm, submitted a FOIA request asking for environmental information on and around 35 North Water Street and 24 North Batavia Avenue. At that same day, Sean Sebold, my husband, also found a document in the city of Batavia's website dated 4/10/2025, from Lauren Newman, the city administrator, detailing environmental issues at 24 North Water Street and the surrounding areas. The document includes surveys, maps of contaminated areas, as well as shows the location of the well monitors. It is a 25-page document that was sent to city council explaining a request for a new ordinance, which was adopted last month. Baffled by the events that happened and knowing that the historic board knew about and approved the restaurant idea for River Street, I decided to have a meeting at the city council level. So I contacted Anthony and I asked on April 18th to request an opportunity to get on the city council agenda. I wanted an opportunity to share our issues with you. I also asked him some clarification questions about the report Sean found and the water issue as how it would pertain to opening a restaurant at 35 North Water. The city administrator called me on the 21st to ask why I wanted to speak with you. I responded with an email of my concerns. She then asked Anthony to schedule a meeting with the city administrator and the director of community and economic development, Anthony and myself. Anthony arranged a meeting for April 29th. On April 24th, a week after the architect submitted a FOIA request and Sean finding the document on the environmental issues relating to 35 North Water and 24 North Batavia online, James, the architect, received a response from his FOIA request. The response was two sentences, and it said there is no information pertaining to either property. On April 26th, I looked for the April 10th document all over the Batavia website and it was nowhere to be found. I then submitted my own FOIA request for the same properties. On April 29th, Sean and I met with the city administrator and the director of community and economic development, as well as Anthony Esam at city hall. The purpose was to discuss the challenges we have experienced in trying to develop and open a business in the downtown area. We were met with much resistance almost immediately from the administrator and the director. They were very defensive, not opening to hearing our input or our feedback. They did admit to being laxadaisical about enforcing codes on the building owner at 21 North River and the neighboring properties, and they said that they were enforcing codes and moving towards litigation after I brought up issues in previous meetings with Jeff Albertson. I mentioned that two of my contractors involved with 21 North River said the smokestack on the north end of 35 North River Street had severe damage, and they believe the structural integrity is in question. The administrator and director both said there was no basis for their claim. No one had any proof of any structural damage. I encouraged them to have their city inspectors look at the structure, determine whether more in-depth analysis should be done. The administrator and the director said they couldn't react to anything, everything the public said because it would be too expensive and the city doesn't have the structural engineer on staff. When I asked about the property at 35 North Water and mentioned the story about Jeff Albertson's lack of knowledge or information, they both very aggressively stated that Jeff would have no knowledge of anything around there and is not his department. Sean and I both questioned that, as Jeff is very much involved in every decision as we had learned over the last 12 months. They both very adamantly denied that Jeff would have any knowledge of environmental issues or the well monitors, staying again that that is not his department. There was also discussion about gas tanks leaking gas in the soil at 131 North Batavia Avenue. The administrator claimed that a building can be built overcrowding gas tanks, to which I said my car, my architect would not stamp a plan with that. After being talked down to, yelled at, and cut off numerous times by the administrator and sometimes director, Sean and I called the meeting to an end. I said I would take the project to a neighboring town and that was anxious for the board game restaurant. Anthony asked Sean and I to stay to work on some sort of resolution. A discussion developed then about the, A, the city's lack of holding owners accountable for the code violations, and B, the cost of repairing land that is contaminated, which is cost prohibitive to any developer. If the city wanted to see growth and development, they have to allocate funds in the form of a grant to help fix the issues of the past that are now deemed unsafe and/or not permissible. It was decided I would submit a grant request for work to be done at property 21 North River Street to make it a standalone property and meet code requirements once redeveloped. The grant was to be decided on at the end of May, per the city administrator. On May 2nd, I received, I received FOIA information, which was over 50 pages long, on 35 North Water Street and the surrounding areas. The same properties that my architect got nothing on earlier. There are detailed permit requests for well monitors, signed by Jeff Albertson, actually four pages, along with much information about environmental issues with the area from 2018 and updated again in 2023. On May 30th, I received an email from Anthony saying that the city would be able to present a possible incentive of up to $250,000 from TIF funds the city council deliberation, would deliberate over regarding 21 North River Street. Members of the city council, I come for you, come before you tonight because my husband and I truly love this town. Batavia is where we've raised our four children, built our lives, made lasting friendships, and created cherished memories. It's not just where we live, it is our home. We want to be a part of shaping Batavia's future and contributing to its growth. Unfortunately, over the past year, we have faced significant challenges with infrastructure and administrative processes. These hurdles have not only caused deep frustration, but have also cost us over $100,000 in engineering studies and architectural plans. Despite our passion and commitment, the ongoing roadblocks have pushed us to the heartbreaking point of considering moving our project and our dream to another town. That's not what we want, and I don't think that's what you want. But at this point, it feels like it's our only viable path forward. Thank you.
Who's next?
Well, there was a lot there. I'd like to see staff's response to that, and then we need to have a discussion, in my opinion, around this, if anyone wants to join me in bringing this up or, or the whole topic. There was a lot there, so.
And, um, if I could just make a small request. Number one, thank you for speaking. Um, it's, we don't always hear everything, so it's always nice, somebody kind of comes forward and mentions, um, both the good and the bad, right? I mean, if you, if you want to hear about the good, you got to hear about the bad too, right? I know it helped me and probably the rest of the city council. If you could just itemize, like, hey, here, here's the steps I went through. To Tony's point, there's a lot there, right? So it'd be nice just to get an itemized list, and then we can kind of, and feel free to email to all of us, and then we'll go ahead and, you know, follow up with staff.
Okay. Who should I mail it to? Email to everybody?
Yeah, just do the council, the entire council.
Okay.
Yeah, I, um, there was a lot there. Again, thank you so much for bringing this up. Um, I, I do appreciate that. I guess, um, you know, I'm, I'd also like to kind of hear a little bit at some point, how did we get here? There was a lot going on. You know, if we have, if we have buildings that we're not enforcing the code on, well, what do we have the code for? Like, I don't think properties, especially in our, you know, on River Street, which is, you know, the heart of downtown, kind of our best, our best spot to a point where it's going to cost that much money to, to fix, and, you know, maybe, I don't know, it feels like we have a strong interest in ensuring that those properties get developed and that when somebody wants to do something, we, we bend over backwards. So I'm excited to see this list. I'm excited to have this conversation. I don't know where this goes from here, but I think it's really important that we don't kind of let this go.
Anybody else?
I will just ask, is, is there a glimmer of hope for Batavia, or have you guys moved on?
At this point, we have not moved on, but we do not.
Come to the mic.
We need to have you use the mic when you're speaking, so that it gets recorded. Sorry.
I'm sorry. At this point forward, we don't have anything under contract in the city of Batavia, so we are dead in the water for Batavia. And I'm looking at other options very wholeheartedly.
Thank you for coming in.
Can I also ask, when did you start this project? Or when did you start discussions with the city or?
Over a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
I have emails that go back to February of last year. And Anthony and I actually met probably a year and a half ago, just kind of walking around areas. It was a, it's been a two-year process of thinking and walking around and saying, is this going to work, and then observing, and then, hey, Anthony, this is what I'm thinking about doing. He showed me a couple ideas. 21 North River Street wasn't even on the market, and my broker got us in there, so that was fantastic. So this is, this is not something that I just picked up last week. This has been going on 18 months at least.
Or, man, Anderson.
Uh, how, do you think you can get that to us either tonight or tomorrow morning? I think this is something we should be talking about next week or in the committee of the whole.
I will send it as soon as I go home.
Perfect, and then it'd be nice to have, um, at least some sort of response from the city staff before committee of the whole next week, so we can at least understand their side of it as well.
Would you like me to send you exactly what I read then?
Yeah, I mean, if it has, if it's written, I think that's.
That's fine.
Perfect, I can do that.
Or, you want to make?
Yes, I just want to say I look forward to the opportunity to respond to all of the things that were said tonight, and I hope that everyone will have an open mind and realize that there are two sides to stories.
I have no reason to make anything up, just.
Yeah, the one comment I would make is, there's a lot of Batavia history here, and especially in those buildings, and most of them are over 100 years of age.
Or history.
And, uh, many of them were probably built before we had a building inspector. I mean, it was, they just went down and built things. So there's a lot of stuff that probably does not meet current day code, and the staff has talked to me a couple of times about this, and, you know, that chimney over there that she's mentioned is, is a concern, that, that bricks may start falling off of it and come down, it could kill somebody, so I mean.
There's a serious concern from contractors that the smokestack will fall down.
Right. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think if nothing else, it's pretty quick. We probably need to bring in the owners of these properties that she's talking to and say, this is what's going on here, and what do you plan, or what are you willing to do, or what's going to be the plan in course of action here? So thank you for coming in and bringing it up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else in the audience? All right, moving then to item number nine, which is a proclamation honoring teacher Kim Anderson upon. So Alden, Vogelsinger, you're going to read this?
I am going to do my best. Thank you to everybody that's here tonight. Okay. Whereas, the city of Batavia is proud to recognize individuals who have dedicated their lives to the service and betterment of our community. And whereas, Kim Anderson has devoted 33 exceptional years to educating the youth of Batavia, having served with distinction at both JB Nelson and Grace McWayne Elementary. And whereas, throughout her career, she has taught across multiple grade levels with a particular passion and focus on fourth grade, as well as serving as an advanced math teacher, providing both foundational knowledge and enrichment opportunities to her students. And whereas, Kim Anderson is known not only for her excellence in teaching, but for her ability to inspire and empower students to believe in themselves, to rise to challenges, and to discover capabilities they never knew they had. And whereas, her dedication has impacted lives of countless students, and she is widely regarded as a transformative force in the lives of those she has taught. Indeed, many students have said, without hesitation, she changed my life. And whereas, her legacy will endure in the achievements, confidence, and character of the students she has so, so wholeheartedly nurtured and guided. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 2nd, as Kim Anderson Day in the city of Batavia, Illinois, and call upon all citizens to join me in extending heartfelt gratitude and warm congratulations to Kim Anderson for her extraordinary service to our community and enwishing her every happiness, happiness in her well-earned retirement. Your honor, I move that we pass the proclamation as read.
Second.
First, second, Kirk call the roll.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfa?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lomen?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, do any of Mrs. Anderson's students want to come up and take a nice photo of her?
Were you crying? Oh my God. I'm excited. You have to go up there. Just like, drop it. I'll leave. No, keep your hands. Ah, thank you. Are we done? One more, one more. Important one.
There you go.
I love it. Thank you, okay, I'll make this super quick.
So, the reason why it's cool, you're.
No, JB Nelson and Grace McWayne, yes, yes, okay.
Well, here's your proclamation.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Want to make a few comments?
Okay, I'll make a few comments and I'll make it quick. Okay, um, all right. Parents, I need you here. And I need you there, so I'm going to talk to you guys.
Her daughter was in, not like, her daughter.
Okay, no, 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 take pictures, okay. All right, no, 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 I'll make it quick, so it can be done. Okay, I just, I think it's, I'll just, right there, I got it, okay. All right, yes, okay, and, yeah, okay, all right, okay. This is crazy, okay, no, not at all, okay, all right. Good evening, and thank you for such incredible, kind, and humbling recognition. It truly means a lot to be honored in this family, um, for, by the families that have done this for me, that I've had the privilege of working through, with, throughout the years. To the parents, thank you for your trust, your partnership, and your unwavering support. Teaching is a journey that thrives on collaboration and the connection between school and home, and has made all the difference. I've learned so much from your children, and I hope that they've learned just a little bit from me. I also want to take a moment to recognize the teachers, past and present, who have been mentors, guided, and inspired me along the way. I need to thank Ruth Chusano, who is not here, for opening the door for me becoming.
Uh, all I basically see is her giving hugs because people are running up to her and she embraces them. And so she has been a tremendous teacher, a mentor to her fellow colleagues and, um, made an incredible contribution to this community. You will be missed as an educator, but we congratulate you on retirement and know your legacy will live for many generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, moving to item 10, proclamation, law enforcement civilian personnel week. Alderman Beck?
A proclamation. Whereas dedicated law enforcement civilian personnel serve the people of Illinois by providing vital services that support and enhance public safety efforts. And whereas law enforcement civilian personnel are integral to helping law enforcement agencies protect and serve their communities, often working behind the scenes to ensure effective operations. And whereas these professionals contribute their expertise and experience in critical areas such as maintaining, maintaining criminal justice records, managing data systems, facilitating communication and supporting investigations and administrative functions. And whereas their work improves law enforcement strategies, enhances community engagement and ensures the integrity and accuracy of criminal justice information. And whereas Batavia Police Department's 12 civilian personnel help build trust and confidence in the police department by engaging with the community and providing a positive face of law enforcement. And whereas these hardworking individuals deserve recognition and gratitude for their ongoing public service, dedication and commitment to excellence. And whereas law enforcement civilian personnel across Illinois consistently demonstrate professionalism, efficiency and compassion in the performance of their essential duties. And whereas the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police have designated the first week of June, beginning with the first Sunday of the month, as a time to recognize and appreciate the vital role of law enforcement civilian personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the week of June 1st through June 7th, 2025, as Law Enforcement Civilian Personnel Appreciation Week in the City of Batavia and encourage all residents to recognize the contributions of civilian professionals who support law enforcement and help ensure the safety and well-being of our community. Your Honor, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Put your second, any discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Just approved. Do we have a proclamation or are we just?
We're just, uh, speaking this evening, but I did want to, um, as, as I have done with, uh, other groups of employees within the city of Batavia, we, this is a new tradition that we have to honor the professions that, um, people have chosen to serve the city of Batavia and its residents. And one of those that is, uh, very dear are the police who keep us safe. Um, but not only are they an excellent group of, um, professionals with amazing skills and have, uh, solved crimes, um, so quickly, it, it astounds me. I think the most special part about the Batavia Police Department is the relationship that they have with the community. And never was that more apparent to me than in the civil unrest that, uh, followed the killing of George Floyd. Um, it was a time when we were all on edge as to what might happen in communities and we were given three days' notice that there was to be a peace rally out here at the Peg Bond area. And we knew hundreds of people were going to be coming to this event. The police department reached out to the high school student who was organizing that, Isabella Irish is, is her name. Amazing, uh, woman to be able to, uh, pull all of that together so quickly. But our department contacted her, met with her several times to make sure that everyone was going to be safe. And I can tell from the bottom of my heart that this, the Batavia Police Department was ready for anything that could have happened that day, but they were out there amongst the crowd with the clothes that they wear every day. Not riot gear, short sleeves, doing as they always do, interacting with that community and making them feel safe. To the point that in the Inspire Awards the following year, Isabella Irish received the award for the, the community inspiration award for hosting that event. And she called out the Batavia Police Department, saying that there are police departments across this nation that have severe problems that need to be addressed, but I wish they all could be more like the Batavia Police Department. It was a really proud moment. They have so much to be proud for. And, uh, also Chief Flowers, if you would like to say anything else?
Sure, I'll just follow that up with, we couldn't get any of the work done that we do without our civilian personnel, our records technicians, our community service officer, our administrative assistant and, um, our evidence custodian. They really are the glue behind the scenes. They're the, the unsung heroes of our department and I truly value the efforts and contributions that they make to our department and to our community every day. Uh, they truly do, uh, keep us moving forward and for that, we're forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we done with that one? We'll move to 11. Presentation, B A T A C, Quaterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Liam McKay. I'm a, I'm a commissioner with Batic. I have a couple of commissioners with me tonight, Josh and Jared, and I can assure you, we will be the least controversial matter on tonight's agenda and that's what I'm aiming for. As we know, we're an advisory committee. You guys have got the really tough job of making the decisions about what public policy will affect cycling, uh, walking and even access to public transport in this town and the programs and the funding that go with it. We understand that. So as an advisory commission, our job is to make sure we're a good partner. We're well-informed, we use evidence base to put forward arguments to you about the prioritization of those resources. And in doing that, I'd just like to use the example of the, this month's Batavian, showing you that this ain't no Randall Road. People love this place largely because of the space, because of the ease of walking, cycling, and it's getting better each time. We're putting in for the League of U.S. Cyclists Bicycle Friendly, um, Certificate, Certification Process again, we're almost there, I think. Um, we're almost there. Thank you to, um, the staff. The staff have been excellent, um, in cooperation with this. I, I want to recognize that, um, for bronze again, but hopefully, you know, we're aspirational. I'm a Sox fan, um, uh, that we will get to silver. Um, and in doing that, uh, we need to get our act together and doing that, we, we have formed a strategic plan where we want to make sure it's a good one, so it's not going to be done quickly. But for example, the draft objective is that in 10 years, the Batic will be a key player in shaping our transport choices. Will have contributed to a community where it is easy and attractive to walk, cycle and live. It will be a healthier, safer, more sustainable and closer knit community that is a leader in our region and the envy of our neighbors. I wanted to add, take that Geneva, but apparently that was injudicious. Um, we have direct input, uh, to the Kane County Bike Map. The Kane County Cycling Coordinator comes to our meetings. So we're trying to impact just beyond our boundary so that it's coordinated, so that you don't come to a, a halt at the end of Batavia's borders and that we try to link up and make sure there's a network for cycling and walking in our community. We're going to the concert in the park, the 26th of June, will see us in 70s gear on 70s bicycles, apparently. Um, I may wear a wig. Um, we have attended a farmer's market already and we are going to attend another farmer's market to, to have a kids' activity tent, um, to try to get kids involved in, uh, the really important stuff about walking and cycling at a young age. We all know that movement is incredibly important and the choices for mobility are very important in terms of health, uh, and later terms health. We need to inform you, um, about evidence of what's working and what needs improvement. In doing that, the cameras which are doing the pedestrian and cycling counts are going to be really important to us to know where infrastructure is working, uh, where it, it doesn't exist and why isn't anyone cycling there? I'm sure when the mayor many years ago fought the hard fight to get the, the bike path along the river, the river path, the river walk, um, that many people would have said, well, who would want to do that? No one does it now. And no one did it then because there wasn't one. So it's a bit like the chicken and the egg. Uh, and lastly, I'd just like to talk about the legislative agenda. Um, we, I've attended the National Planning Conference in a private capacity and also the Walk and Bike Summit in Springfield, where we also lobbied in a private capacity about around some legislation. A piece of legislation that is changing, we hope, is the definition of a bike to make sure we up, update that because of the, you know, the, the introduction of e-bikes and also three-wheel bikes, which are better for people who have mobility difficulties and have balance issues. We want to make sure they're lawfully recognized as, as participants in our cycling community. And the other one was that when there is a cycling or walking fatality, that it should be mandated that a traffic study is undertaken. I found it hard to believe from, you may have guessed, I'm a foreigner, um, from a place that I came from, that, that these don't take place for each and every fatality. In fact, I don't think it should have to be triggered by a fatality myself, but let's just start with a fatality and then work on other incidents. But we need to work out what caused the accident, how we can avoid it in future. Was it an infrastructure problem? Was it a behavior problem? Both of those things are things that the commission hope to work on in partnership with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the chamber is up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. We'll, we'll try to keep it on a positive trajectory. Uh, I wanted to, uh, say this month, we are focusing on Boca Ditos for our Chamber Eats program. That's our new program where we focus on a different Batavia restaurant each month. We will be dining there for our out to lunch on Thursday, June 20th. I would encourage you all to join us. Boca Ditos has authentic Argentine cuisine, as you know, it's delicious, so come join us, uh, and enter into our, our raffle for receiving $25 in Chamber bucks and $25 as a gift card to Boca Ditos. We're seeing, uh, a surge in flags, Batavia flag sales ever since you have determined it as official Batavia flag. It's great because a portion of the sales will go to the Flag Day Monument and, um, but I know that I still hear that residents don't know where to order the flag. So please help us spread the word. You could go to the Batavia Chamber website and order a three-by-five or a garden flag and pick it up at the Chamber. We are excited to announce our new members this month. Misty River Music Makers, MCZ Productions, Advantage Group, Recover Well Therapeutic Massage and Wellbeing, Marco V. Kalella, DMD, AGS Technology, Blinka Optical, and Exit Factor are now valued members of the Chamber. Please go, uh, and check them out on our website to find out more about them and support them. We have, um, some great events coming up I wanted to let you know about. Our registration is open for our 50, I think it's our 52nd golf outing. It is June 23rd at Bliss Creek, a great fun day. I know a lot of you are registered, but if you would still like to join us, please do. We have our Coffee and Commerce Morning Networking on June 11th at ADM at Boji Bikes. We have a ribbon cutting for Everdeen's grilled cheese finally Wednesday, June 11th at 4:00 PM. On Thursday, June 12th at ADM, we're having a morning networking for Batavia Women in Business. Everyone is, including men, are welcome to join us. That's at ADM at Oscar Swan. Tuesday, June 17th at 11:30, we have a multi-chamber speed networking event with 14 other chambers. Wednesday, June 18th at 4:30, we have networking at Rookies. And, um, finally, I just want to mention, I'm having a roundtable with our industrial partners on June 20th. Mayor, I encourage you to join us. That will be with Bill Foster and he will be, uh, collecting information about how those businesses have been affected by the recent tariffs. Does anybody have any questions for me before I introduce my special guest? She thought she was the spotlight of the evening. I'm pleased to introduce Eileen Pacero, the Executive Director of the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. She has a lot going on, so I thought this would be a wonderful opportunity for her to address you tonight. Welcome.
Thank you, Margaret.
I am, I know. Everyone left. I would, I thought everybody came only to see me and then I found out I was not actually
the main event. Um, primarily, I wanted to come here tonight and just say thank you. Um, we are incredibly fortunate that we do live in such a supportive community. Um, certainly the support of the city council, of the mayor, of our city administrator, um, is really helpful. Right now, uh, the charitable food network is seeing a lot of challenges. A lot of the programs that we depend upon to make sure that our shelves are always full are being cut at the federal level. So that is posing a real challenge for us to make sure that we can still serve the families that we serve in Batavia. Um, in 2024, that was 847 families in Batavia. Uh, that amounted to just 2,600 and some people, individuals, um, 969 of those were children and 467 were senior citizens. So these are our neighbors and friends that we are serving, um, and it's really important that we're able to continue this work. I know the thing that everybody really wants to hear about is our new building. Um, we just voted on it. You voted on it tonight on the renovation, uh, that will be starting hopefully very soon. We have about four months to complete that, so everybody's crossing our fingers that that is all going to get done in a really quick manner. Our lease ends September 30th, so we are planning a move for that weekend before September 30th and we hope to open in our new location at 916 First Street on October 1st. Um, for if you, I'm hoping you all know, but it is a beautiful facility. We're very excited for that project and it's going to be about 14,000 square feet, which is really going to mean that we'll be able to, um, serve the families in Batavia even better. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions? I would just say that certainly I'm very proud of the food pantry in the Clothes Closet and all good work that they kind of quietly do and most people have no idea of the immensity of work that you folks do out there and supporting a lot of people that seriously need it, that this isn't some pass by, that somebody's, we, we know who needs the support and, and we're giving it to them. And I think that really makes Batavia shine in a lot of different ways. And you being the leader of the staff there, you really deserve a lot of pat on the back for really setting that up and making it work for a whole bunch of people who would not be living as good as they do now be, if it wasn't for your work, so.
Well, the real stars at the food pantry in Clothes Closet are the volunteers because they perform about 80% of the work that we have done there. So, and you know, they're not being compensated at all for that. So we're really appreciative of them and their time, but thank you.
Well, the one we also need to thank is Congresswoman Underwood, who gave us a $3 million grant to buy the building and now we're spending almost 800,000 of it or over 800,000 of it tonight to remodel it so it's fit for the total uses that you, you guys need. So that was a real blessing and.
It was. We would definitely not have been able to purchase that building had it not been for that grant, so.
I remember she called me one day and wanted me to meet her at the Twin Elms and I went out there and she said, I want to do something for the food pantry and the Clothes Closet and they were telling me there's buildings out here we should drive by. So she and I drove around the neighborhood a little bit and then she did it and then that is all going to get done in a really quick manner. Our lease ends September 30th, so we are planning a move for that weekend before September 30th, and we hope to open in our new location at 916 First Street on October 1st. I'm hoping you all know, but it is a beautiful facility. We're very excited for that project, and it's going to be about 14,000 square feet, which is really going to mean that we'll be able to serve the families in Batavia even better. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions? I would just say that certainly, I'm very proud of the Food Pantry and the Clothes Closet and all the good work that they kind of quietly do, and most people have no idea of the immensity of work that you folks do out there in supporting a lot of people that seriously need it, that this isn't some pass-by, that somebody's, we know who needs the support, and we're giving it to them. And I think that really makes Batavia shine in a lot of different ways. And you being the leader of the staff there, you really deserve a lot of pat on the back for really setting that up and making it work for a whole bunch of people who would not be living as good as they do now if it wasn't for your work.
Well, the real stars at the Food Pantry and Clothes Closet are the volunteers, because they perform about 80% of the work that we have done there. So, you know, they're not being compensated at all for that, so we're really appreciative of them and their time. But thank you.
One we also need to thank is Congresswoman Underwood, who gave us a $3 million grant to buy the building, and now we're spending almost $800,000 of it, or over $800,000 of it, tonight to remodel it so it's fit for the total uses that you guys need. So that was a real blessing.
It was. We would definitely not have been able to purchase that building had it not been for that grant. So.
I remember she called me one day and wanted me to meet her at the Twin Elms, and I went out there, and she said, "I want to do something for the Food Pantry and the Clothes Closet," and they were telling me there's buildings out here we should drive by. So she and I drove around the neighborhood a little bit, and then she did it, and then within, shortly thereafter, the world around us reapportioned her out of our area, so she's no longer our Congresswoman. But, boy, she did some nice stuff for us while she was here, so.
She sure did.
When we get it all finished, we should, I'm going to want to invite her back here just so she can see what her good efforts did, because she really did provide some very needed money to put that into place, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right on. To item 13, which is Resolution 2025-077R, approving variations to the subdivision regulations on Center Street. We've already taken this to committee, and they've approved it, so I don't know if there's much to talk about here other than make a motion.
A little bit of a variation for a little tiny spot that most of us probably didn't even know existed.
Right.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-77R, approving variations to the subdivision regulations on Center Avenue. Michelle Lambert, applicant.
Motion. And second, for the approval of Resolution 2025-077R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Absent.
Farenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. At long last, we got that one done. Thank you. All right, moving then to ordnance 14, which is Ordinance 2025-008, restriction on sale of kratom and hemp-derived products. Who's got this?
This is an ordinance that we had earlier in the year, went back, and staff and police chief went outside, talked to business owners, and tried to craft this as well as we could to achieve the things that we wanted, but not, you know, deny sales. I think this is something, I'm sure at some point, this will come down from the state, maybe differently, but that's on them, not on us. I think we did a very good job. I want to give, you know, thanks to our chief and Cheryl for the time that they spent, you know, going over this, so that what's before us now is something that we can agree on, you know, tries to protect the kids, keep them away from it, and, you know, regulate the sales without going too far with it. Unless anybody has any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 2025-008, restriction on the sale of kratom and hemp-derived products.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Vogelsinger, for the approval of Ordinance 2025-008. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Farenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to 15, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Friday, June 13th, the Park District is hosting the Senior Savvy Expo, and the city is the major sponsor of that event. It will take place at Shannon Hall Community Center, and it's from 9:00 to 12:00 that day. Our Police Department is going to be there to teach people about how to avoid fraud, in particular, on the computer. We'll also have our single-use bags to distribute to the community, and we hope all the seniors and those soon to become seniors would come out to the event, because it was very well-attended last year and contained a bunch of very important information, very useful information. On June 14th, going to be a lot of events for people to go to. The first will be an opportunity to meet your older people, who will be at the farmer's market that day, and so we hope you'll come out sometime between 8:00 and noon to meet and greet. And then also, it is Flag Day that day, and the city is very proud of our tradition of going big on celebrating that Dr. Segrand, who is one of the Fathers of Flag Day, is from right here in Batavia or lived here at the time that he petitioned for that to become a holiday. We're also very, very proud that Batavia, Illinois, is the home of the Flag Day Monument, and we will have the community band there. Mayor will speak, and it's always a wonderful, very patriotic event. The Green Program will launch June 16th. Max has been working with Craig Schneider on that, and there will be launch materials and things. We'll make sure to get the word out big. We've received over 600 responses to the electric survey, and the deadline has been extended to June 15th, given that we had some post-office delivery errors. Staff from Administration and Electric Utility have scheduled a town hall for our industrial and commercial customers as part of the electric study. An invite was mailed to all commercial and industrial customers, and older people are invited to attend the event. It's on June 25th from 8:30 a.m. at Weddick Corporation in our industrial park. If you'd like to attend, just let Max know, and he can give you more information about that. And I just want to share some information from Human Resources. We're really proud to learn from IPBC, who is our health insurance cooperative. We've been with them for five years, I'm sorry, it's actually going on eight years, but our five-year cost ratio is 0.02%. It makes Batavia the lowest-cost ratio in the entire group, which includes 154 organizations. And I want to give a shout-out to both our Human Resources Department and all of the people who serve on our Wellness Committee from each of the departments within our organization to come up with events and provide information and education. It's a very active group within our organization, and I think it has, you know, a lot to do with us being able to achieve numbers like that. The Electric Division will be installing primary and secondary services within the Ashton Ridge project, and it's going to last the entire month of June and possibly July. Lead service line replacements are continuing. They're doing these at a rate of 25 per week, so they're really knocking them out this year. And then also, we hope that the weather's going to cooperate at some point this week so we can get the West Water Tower sparkly clean for football season, so that it absolutely shines. And then on May 28th, Comfort Dog River celebrated her first birthday, so happy birthday to River. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes?
Are we going to have a crossing guard on 31 and Union this year?
We don't anticipate doing that. We wanted to have the crossing guard there when it was four lanes across, and we feel that the safety has greatly been improved by there only being two lanes to cross and kind of a refuge in the middle as well. One of the things that we're looking at in the Phase 2 is even building upon the safety of all of the intersections, Union being one of those that will be a primary focus. Millview is another one. Yeah, so.
Is it possible to consider putting one there?
Yes. But I can tell you, last year, we may look to go with a different company if we do that. We didn't really see them out there crossing people very often last year. That was a little bit of a disappointment, that they were sitting either inside cars or up in the shade of somebody's yards and not really sitting out there waiting to help people to cross the road.
I just wanted to bring it up because I heard.
We can put it on an agenda for a discussion.
Concerned.
I see nodding heads around, so it seems like folks would like to discuss that. Anything else? Yes, Alderman, Baron.
With the state legislative passing their budget, I just wanted to see, did the ordinance regarding all the electric stuff, was that part of it at all? Is that on the back burner? Like, what, is there an update on that?
It was not called for a vote in this session. At the very last minute, a new, more than 800-page version of the Energy Omnibus Bill came out, and the powers that be felt that it was too much to digest at the very end of that legislative session. But I would imagine that all of those matters will continue to live on and be raised in future sessions, maybe not in the veto session, which requires a 2/3 majority, but possibly waiting until spring.
Are there items that did pass that may have an effect on us, and would it maybe be effective for us to have that brought up in a meeting, just to kind of go over some of the changes that may affect Batavia from the state level?
No part of the energy legislation passed this session.
Not just the energy, but any part that may affect. Like, I was reading through what Brad had sent, and I was, long list, broken down into different groups, different sections. I think it might be helpful, beneficial for us to, you know, for it to be reviewed with us if there's anything that we need to be aware of that may affect the city from any taxes or anything that may have been implemented.
So everyone did receive the IML correspondence? If there's anything in there that you would like me to put on an agenda, let me know, and we can have a discussion about it. Is that what you were intending, or?
Just a summary, a summary of anything that may have passed that may affect the city of Batavia.
Okay. I'll pull that out of Brad's, because Brad included both the things that passed and the things that didn't. So do you want me to look at Brad's and just pull out the things that passed?
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial for us to understand what that may affect with our residents. I don't know, maybe I'm just swinging at something if nobody else wants to hear about it.
Usually, there's so much in whatever gets passed, by the time it gets to the floor and actually gets through, you're going to have to go through and read through some of that to try and figure out what's going to affect what businesses we have or what would affect our residents. They didn't get any of the labor taxes in there, so they didn't find the money for the, you know, CTA and RTA, so they're still missing that. They just have to figure out where to come up with, you know, $100 million.
I don't know. Tony, I mean.
Well, from the education standpoint, you know, we have similar lobbyists, and the general feeling that we got from our Government Relations Department was that the uncertainty coming from the federal government put a lot of things on hold, you know, to see where we stand. Revenue, the transit issue with the fiscal cliff for the transit system is all kind of in limbo now, so, you know, it's kind of a wait-and-see, and no one wanted to put their neck out and raise any revenues, and so that's, they copped out, basically, if you will, but understandably, there's so much uncertainty.
Yeah. Speaking of unfunded stuff, everyone's favorite topic, I'm hearing a lot of people reach out about the dam. Not formally reaching out, but just like, "Hey, how you doing? You're my new older man. Can we talk about the dam?" Just that type of stuff. I would love to get just what's the latest and greatest. We don't need to have a big, long discussion, just, hey, you know, as of whatever, June 2nd, 2025, or whatever it is, maybe June 7th, 2025, like, what were we at? What are the next steps? Just something like that. So right now, we've been in a holding pattern, waiting for the Park District to respond whether they wanted to join us in the dam feasibility study that had been previously proposed, and I intend to attend the Park Board meeting on June 17th, so for, so that we can have that discussion with them, and then thereafter, I'll report back to City Council about whether they would like to collaborate with us on that study. There's no contractor selected for that study yet? It's just? There's a proposal. Proposal, okay. For design work and feasibility study. You know what, just, I'm going to try to grab an extra 10 yards. Is that proposal available online that I can send to somebody, or? I'll look and see. Yeah, I'd be happy to send it to you.
I think the back-room word is, anything like that, dam removal or whatever, it's got money attached to it, it ain't going to happen.
Oh, I know. Yeah, no, I'm well aware.
Dam is out there, it's deteriorating, and at some point, it's going to fail.
Yeah, and in part, kind of what I'm looking to, I'll just throw it out there. So the reality is, nothing is going to happen, right? And our dam has failed, it's going to fail more, and that's going to put the depot pond at severe risk, right? And so the question is, how do we tell those property owners around that pond, "Hey, you know what? If this dam collapses in the next two or three years..."
We've had engineering done on securing the depot pond in a water system, and we would pump water out of the river and put it into the depot pond, so we would maintain the level of the depot pond.
But even that costs money as well, right? So even. Oh, yeah. I did want to say that the end of the dam will not be violent, like, a huge, what its demise will be is that a huge chunk will fall out of it, and the water will flow, and the pond will drain. So it'll be, it'll probably be ugly, but the risks associated with it in terms of property damage, we understand are low. Totally get that, but, I mean, reality doesn't care, right? So the fact is, if the dam's already failed, it's going to fail, there's no money to replace it, then we need to talk about how do we message the pond? You know, if the probability is more than 40%, which it probably is, right? We should probably just start getting that message out there and just saying, "Look, here's the reality, what's going on." Understood. Thank you.
I would look for the city to probably pay for most of that pond work.
I know, and my texts are high enough, so we're going to have to find somewhere.
Just warn you ahead of time.
Okay.
Anybody else get any observations or stuff? Okay, very quickly, going to the mayor's report. I just want to share that in Batavia right now, we have six senior living communities, and there are various designs and sizes and costs and whatever have you. Right now, we've got three on the east side and three on the west side, and now we're building a seventh one, which is right across the street from Holy Claus Church at Deer Path and Main Street, and it's probably not all senior, but most of it's going to be seniors living in their 96 little separate apartments they are going to have in there, and if you've got some health issue, they kind of take care of you until you get better, and then they might move you to someplace else. That's at least my understanding of it. But what's interesting is, in the last two or three weeks, our receptionist out here who answers the phone has now taken, I know she got another one today, I took one last week, and there was one she had before that, so we now have had three, I'll call it, Batavia senior residents who are still living in their homes, and they've put their name down as wanting to get into one of the senior living communities. And they're calling in frustration because they're calling the senior living communities, and nobody's answering the phone. And I think the problem is, is that right now, our senior living communities have enormous waiting lists of people wanting to get into the Batavia senior living communities and get into them. And River Rain up here is, you know, has got a big list, I know, and so I'm told, Heritage Woods over on East Wilson Street's got a big list, too, of people waiting to get in. And we don't have an answer for them, but I just wanted you guys to know, as members of the City Council, somebody may start asking you questions about, "What do you know about why nobody can get into a senior citizen? Well, they're so popular that they're all full, and they all have people waiting on a list to get in." And so that's just the harsh reality of the moment of what's happening in Batavia. And I think, you know, if you want to pat yourselves on the back, it probably speaks to a large degree about the perceptions of the world about what a nice town this is, and we don't have a lot of the problems that other places do. And so a lot of people in their elderly years think it's, this would be a good place to live. And so we shall see what we shall see, but that's kind of a moving motion in the building here right now on almost a daily basis, that we're getting the calls of senior citizens that would like to get into Batavia. I think if we built three more senior living communities on the west side, they'd probably all be full very quickly. here right now on almost a daily basis, that we're getting the calls of senior citizens that would like to get into Batavia. I think if we built three more senior living communities on the west side, they'd probably all be full very quickly. Not that we're going to do that, but there is a big demand for that. So you may get people asking you, gee, how can I get in? Or what's the story? And best thing you can do is tell them, go down and pick out the ones you want, and go put your name on the waiting list and see how long you have to wait. And I know some people have waited a couple of years on some of these, so it's not something that flips over real quick. All right, enough for me. I guess we need to have a motion to enter executive session for a few minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and second, motion by Wolf, second by Malley, that we enter executive session for the.
Just to clarify, it's for purchase of real estate, correct?
Purchase of real, yes, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.